Good evening. I'd like to call to order the February 12, 2020 school committee meeting. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to enter executive session to continue discussions relative to collective bargaining agreements with employee groups and individuals, employees, and the strategies to be followed and/or for continued ongoing litigation.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. This requires a roll call vote. How do you vote, Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. We will reconvene at 6:30 for the public hearing. Thank you.
I'd like to reconvene and call to order the budget hearing for February 12th, 2020 at 6:34 PM.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman.
Welcome.
I'd like to start off with our budget hearing presentation for our FY21 budget as it stands today, February 12th, 2020. We always keep in mind during the budget process our district strategy, which is the Turksbury Public Schools community believes that our educational program will encompass a 21st century teaching and learning approach that promotes consistent growth among our students and staff to achieve academic, social, and emotional success for all students. And the theory of action to get us there, if the Turksbury Public Schools prioritizes a growth mindset among all stakeholders while providing quality professional development, and this professional culture is grounded in collaboration, then all students will experience student-centered instruction prioritizing positive outcomes. That's a mindset that our district has encompassed for the past couple of years, that our administrative team helped develop. And we try to keep that, those thoughts in mind as we allocate resources for our school department. So the school department budget consists of four major parts, three of which are managed by the schools, salary, operating, capital outlay. And one of our components is manage and shared with the town fixed costs such as retirement, health insurance, other types of insurance, debt service, and things like that that we don't have a whole lot of control over. We manage and share those fixed costs with the town. What we talk about generally when we talk about the school department budget is salary, operating, and the capital outlay that we sort of have more say in what happens in those areas. So that's what we'll be talking about during this process. Areas of focus that we consider as we go through this process, personnel. We're always looking at class sizes, watching and assessing, making sure it's equitable amongst grade levels and amongst schools whenever we can. Special education service delivery, whether we employ folks or contract resources to provide special education services. That's something we look at when we consider our personnel. How we use our specialists at our K-4 schools, art, music, PE, tech, and STEM. We restructured those positions in FY20. And we're assessing how that restructuring has allocated those personnel during this year and expect to continue that forward into FY21. We increased our summer K-4 clerical services at the schools so that we're better able to open up smoothly in the fall. Last, until last year, we had no summer clerical assistance at our K-4 elementary schools. We piloted a plan, just a part-time, eight to 12 at most schools, most days, most weeks during the summer, just to handle the mail, handle any new students that arrive on the scene. The schools reported back that it really helped them when the students showed up in September to be ready when students and staff returned to school. The other personnel area we plan to address is an additional resource officer in conjunction with the Turksbury Police Department. It's something that we've been trying to achieve for quite some time. We have two resource officers currently. This third resource officer will be assigned to our elementary schools. Will work with our, with our current resource officers for additional social and emotional contact with students as well as a resource in emergencies. On the areas of technology, device maintenance and replacement is always a key. We have a good schedule together with our technology department on end of life for our devices that we have in our classrooms. So the replacement of those is on a, is on a long-term schedule. Technology is also interested in some monitoring systems so that we are aware of problems before they happen. You know, the only way we knew the internet wasn't working was when the internet wasn't working in the past. So we're looking to be ahead of that. So if something happens at two in the morning, our technology team would get notified and be able to fix that before folks show up for work. And the other thing we're looking at in technology is printing solutions, going to less paper, more online resources. We're finding that's sort of a high school down initiative. They, they use less paper at the high school than they used to, more at the elementary schools. And something we want to look at pushing into all of our schools is less paper. Building improvements was an area of focus, just the upkeep, general upkeep of our older buildings. School security is a major emphasis for us as we decide on projects that we want to undertake in our school buildings. Building systems, HVAC, plumbing, electrical, always in need of repair in our older buildings. STEM and maker spaces are areas that all the schools are wanting to have now. It's a new area of learning that is very exciting and, but it does need some resources and some changes to some classroom spaces. So we're trying to make that happen in all of our schools. And we also have some new E-Rate information for you that I'll present tonight later in the presentation that's changed sort of since the last time we had a budget workshop. So these are the numbers, salary, operating, and capital that we talk about with our budget. Our request for today has changed within salaries and operating. Down here you can see what has changed. The salary reduction we took for some new retirees and resignations that we found out about since last we met in January. These things constantly change, so we try to stay in touch with where we'll be. We had an operating increase on our regular transportation. We had a bid opening for our regular school bus service that increased slightly from what we projected. We were using estimated numbers since our contract was ending. But we opened the bid on February 5th, so now we have actual numbers that we can, we could plug into those areas. And also tuition at Valley Collaborative, they published their FY21 rates, so we had a slight increase in that area as well. This is, this slide just shows the, with the fixed costs included that are attributable to the school department, we're looking at a 2.03 overall budget increase over FY20. So salary makes up 70% of our school budget. We have all of our bargaining units under contract for next year. We'll have to do some budgeting for FY21, but for FY, I mean, sorry, for FY22. But our groups are all in, under contract through the end of FY21. This is our salary slide. On the, on the left is where we were on January 10th. On the right, you see slight changes in aides and teachers because of those changes in our personnel that we found out about since our January 10th workshop. Operating still represents 28% of our school budget and a slight increase in transportation and tuition from where we were on January 10th to where we are today. Capital outlay represents 2% of our budget. We had, we projected 850,000 for capital outlay improvements to our schools. We've been earmarking 250,000 of that for textbooks and software upgrades and replacement year over year. So we plan to continue that next year. And that left 600,000 for building, maintenance, or technology projects. So we have a list that we consult when we are making those decisions on which projects to undertake. It's quite extensive, as you can see from this slide. We have a lot of work that we'd like to get done. Some of it will happen in this capital budget. Some of it will happen through warrant articles or other funding sources as they become available. But we keep this overall list that's constantly being evaluated and looked at. We sort of set up a priority list if we were making those decisions today on where we would be. One of the new pieces of information that we found out since the last meeting is the E-Rate update that I mentioned earlier in the presentation. E-Rate's a program that's designed to give discounts to schools and libraries to provide internet service for students and library patrons. There's two categories of E-Rate funding. Category one is to get internet to your buildings. Category two is for internet service infrastructure within the buildings. Category two was scheduled to end last year. We invested quite a bit of money in our infrastructure to improve capital, to improve connectivity last year, thinking that, we weren't sure if that program was going to continue. Last year was year five of a five-year program for category two funding. In December, they announced that category two funding was going to be extended into a sixth year. So for us, that's FY21. And they added 20% to all participating entities' previous five-year budgets. So they added a year and they gave us another 20% in discounted internet-related services. So these are our budgets by school. It's based on student population and how much we've used of the figures in the previous five years. So we have some significant money that, and we're about a 50% discount rate. So we have some significant money we could save on projects if we get them in the E-Rate program. We have consulted with our tech group and found projects that we want to do for the high school, the Ryan, the Doing, and the Heathbrook. We're gonna work with a consultant over the next couple of weeks to look at some projects for the Wynn and the North Street and Trayhen. We're gonna keep in mind that the North Street and the Trayhen are only gonna be used as school spaces for the next two years. We're not sure what's gonna be the ultimate use of those buildings past September of '22. So that will certainly be a consideration. But we'd like to earmark of our 600,000, 118,000 towards those E-Rate projects. So we get full, take full advantage of those discounts that we're entitled to. Second project we'd like to undertake would be the wind flooring on the first floor. We've had some vapor problems. That's the whole first floor of the wind school. The tiles are just not holding up like we'd like them to. We've had some folks in to do estimates on, on getting that fixed. And the last place we'd like to look at funding a project would be the Heathbrook School in relation to their windows. The windows are plexiglass that has been weathered over time. They're not see-through anymore. They're not energy efficient. The wind blows down there in the wintertime and you can just see the windows shaking back and forth. It's not a great environment for the students down there. So that's really a place we'd like to allocate some resources to get that situation fixed in that school. And especially since that's a school we're gonna be in for the foreseeable future. We found this information regarding our internet speed and cost according to the Education Superhighway website. So this is kind of a little evidence that the work we did last year has shown us some improvement. We're the lowest megabyte per second in the area at 23 cents per megabyte per second. And we're well within the recommended speed of internet service in all of our school buildings. So the, the work that the tech folks have done is reaping dividends for the district. Just, this is a list of completed projects in the last three years or so, major projects we've undertaken. These have been funded by various sources, some with warrant articles at town meeting, some through our capital budget, some through our regular budget, some with grants. But a lot of projects getting, getting completed, as you can see in the district, over the last few years. We have grants and revolving accounts that we manage here in the district. 62 separate funds currently we have active. We had 89 last year. We continue to assess and clean those up in conjunction with the town. That was an initiative the town asked us to start looking at whether we need all those funds. And we're cleaning those up. funds, and we're cleaning those up as we are able to. Grant funding available for FY '20. We don't know what the grant funding levels will be for FY '21 just yet, but they're typically pretty, pretty much the same year over year, with the exception of our Title I funding. As you can see, we had in FY '20 a major increase to our Title I funding, which is linked to free and reduced lunch population in the town. And Tewksbury seems to always be right around the level where if we have a slight increase in our free and reduced lunch, we, it leads to a major increase in our Title I funding. So we're on sort of an upswing year for that. That is likely to go either way next year, because like I said, we're right near the threshold where those numbers change significantly. So this is what our overall budget will look like at town meeting if we were to go to town meeting today. It sort of expands what is included in our fixed costs, and that's generally how we present, how the budget gets presented when it comes around to town meeting time. So next steps, we'll continue discussions with building principals, department heads, elected officials, town officials, teachers, parents, students, and community members to refine and react to our ever-changing needs. As needs and resources change, the school department will be refining our project lists and possibly line items within our budget to best fulfill the current needs in the district. The process is constantly being updated and analyzed for the best use of available and appropriate resources. That process will continue from now through May town meeting. And may, and in fact is likely to, produce some movement within our overall budget. So we could see some movement in line items similar to we have, similar to what we have in the past month, where our salaries may go up or down, operating may go up or down, capital may go up or down. Some of these fixed costs could change too as things come to light over the next few That's the end of my presentation. If we have any questions or comments, I'd love to help if I can.
Thank you, Mr. Libby. I'd like to open it up to my colleagues for any questions or comments.
Mr. Libby, I just have one question. You said the transportation is out to bid as of February 5th. Could you just, I mean, it opened on February 5th. What is the expected date that we will continue to take bids until? Like, how long of a process is this?
That was the end of, that was the bid opening.
Oh, okay.
We went out to bid in January, and we received the bids and opened the bids on February 5th.
Okay, so I just was trying to get a ballpark to...
I had estimated what I thought the daily rate per bus was going to be.
Okay.
And when we opened the bid, it was slightly higher.
It was actually higher than what we had projected? Okay.
Mr. Libby, just on the exempt principal and interest that went up from 19 to 20, is that's the new school, the new elementary school?
Yes.
Is that defined already?
Yep. Yeah, we had a, it was on a warrant article last May that increased that number pretty, I'm sorry, in October, that increased that number pretty significantly. That's when the town found a great rate for the borrowing, so they were advised to get the ball rolling on it and enter into an agreement as soon as possible because the rates were so low.
Okay, perfect.
So that's why that's, that number has changed in the current year.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Libby.
I have no questions.
So just a, just a quick one. I always have questions. So from, from last meeting, when I, when I did the, you know, bottom of the ninth, asking for the warrant article, just to keep the public informed, you know, we, we did meet with the town manager, and there's not going to be a warrant article being brought forward. But my question, I, I do appreciate, obviously, this is the first time I've seen this part, this packet, if you will, and then reprioritizing the capital outlay. You know, knowing the discussions that we had, obviously, last week with, again, I'm going to bring the roof up. We did, last year, we put a massive infrastructure in. Fantastic. You know, we've got internet speed, cost looks great, everything's green, life is I understand free money, but at the same time, $120,000 for free money? I'm just kind of asked the question.
Yeah.
So...
No, I get it.
No, no, like I said, I just asked the question. And then also, if there was a, there was a cost about, there was talk about a, a cost alternative to the Ryan, Trayhan cost alternative application for the roof?
Yeah.
So if we're not going to do it this year?
Yeah.
Where are we doing it?
Can I give you an update?
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah.
We met with, John Marchand, met with roofing consultants.
Yes.
And the same product we used at the Heathbrook School, same company. He let us know that they now have a 20-year warranted roof coating. The product we used at the Heathbrook was a 10-year warranted product. Little more expensive for the material itself, of course. But so far, we've had great results at the Heathbrook. We've had, we had one-third of the roof go through a winter and a half, let's say. And one, two-thirds of the roof has, was put on this summer. The coating was put on this summer, so it's only been through half a winter, let's say, call it now. But no, nothing, no leaks at all at the Heathbrook. So we're very happy with how the product turned out in that case. He looked at the Ryan School, told us about this new product that they have. We asked about the color with the new school going right next to it. Do we want this big white giant roof right next to classrooms, you know? They make the product in gray now, so we're looking at that as a possible alternative. He gave us an estimate of about between $500,000 and $550,000 for the materials to cover the Ryan roof with a 20-year warranty. So it's something we're, we want to really take a hard look at, and it would be probably a nice item if the town were to entertain that for a warrant article in, like, maybe October or...
No, understood.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, great. And just for people in the audience and people at home, this is a public hearing, a public session, so if you do have any questions or comments, you can feel free to reach out to Mr. Libby or Superintendent Malone. So is there anyone that wishes to make a comment regarding the budget hearing this evening? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's budget hearing, public session number two.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to close the budget hearing, public session at 6:58 PM. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. That's a unanimous vote. We will reconvene in one minute for our regularly scheduled school committee meeting. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to reconvene the February 12th, 2020, regular school committee meeting at 7:01 PM. The February 12th, 2020, school committee meeting will be televised and recorded. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting to please identify himself or herself.
I'm with Channel 7. I'm Cameron.
Sir, can I have your name for the record, please? Are you recording tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
It's Eric Kane, E-R-I-C-K-A-N-E. And that's next one.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, do you need them to, their name? Okay, I'll send.
Is there anyone else recording tonight's meeting? Seeing none, thank you. I would like to call on Mr. Wilson to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag's in front of us, thanks. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
I'd like to call on Mr. Jack Stadman for tonight's student representative report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
A short list for today, but nonetheless very important. The price for this year's yearbook for the TMHS graduating class is still on sale for $70. The TMHS Drama Company put on amazing production of Almost Maine this weekend. Congrats to all the cast and crew on a job well done. Stay tuned for Cinderella in the late April. DECA State Participants are now getting prepared for their state conference against the top students from Massachusetts. SAD Club is preparing for their latest poster conference, a contest with their theme of Dude Be Nice. International Club is now collecting shoes for their annual shoe drive, benefiting Soles for Soles. The Health Department is also collecting pet donations for the MSPCA. The Morning Update Crew urges all teachers and students to tune in every morning to their daily updates. Teachers urge students to, over the break, to continue studying and don't forget about their upcoming tests and quizzes. And a friendly reminder that next week, students are on vacation and do not go to school, and there's also a half-day on Friday.
Good news.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stadman. As always, a very entertaining update, thanks. With no presentations, we're going to move on to Citizens Forum. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that wishes to speak to any item on tonight's Seeing none, I'm going to move along to our clerk, Mrs. Demos, I apologize, for the approval of our minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of January 15th, 2020.
A second. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of January 15th, 2020. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. I'd also like to call Mrs. Demos to read the submission and payment of bills, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the School Department payroll for the period ending January 23rd, 2020, to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown in a total amount of $1,356,164.55.
A second. I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period ending January 23rd, 2020. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the School Department payroll for the period ending February 6th, 2020, to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown for a total amount of
A second. I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period ending February 6th, 2020. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mrs. Demos.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a motion to adjust the agenda?
Absolutely.
To move point number R1, recommendation to accept TMHS 2020-2021 Program of Studies to this point in time.
Great. I have a motion on the floor. What is the will of the committee?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move out of order to take on a new business recommendation to accept TMHS 2020-2021 Program of Studies. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. As you see, you have the School Year 2021 Program of Study for Tewksbury Memorial High School. You can see from the bulleted list that the principal has so conveniently put together for us the many changes. There are many, but they're simple. Most of these changes are updates and revisions, including some grammatical corrections that are found as they review the program of studies. I'd like to draw your attention to page 12, which really outlines the course selection procedure for students. It's important that we hopefully accept this program of studies tonight because students comb through the program of studies online over the February vacation and then spend the rest of February and March meeting with their guidance counselors and making choices for their courses for next school year. We do have Principal Vogel, as well as her assistant principals, Ms. Osborne and Mr. O'Leary present, if you have any questions regarding the program of study.
Great. I'd like to open it up to my colleagues for any questions regarding the program of studies.
I'm good.
Great. Seeing no questions, I would like to thank our principals for putting this together for us. It's always exciting to see the new program of studies when they come out and what our students are learning in the classroom. So with that, what is the, what's the will of the committee here?
Make a motion to accept the 20, um, 2020-2021 Program of Studies from Tewksbury Memorial High School.
A second. Great. I have a motion and a second to approve the high school program of studies for 2020-2021. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. It's an unanimous vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, I'd like to call on, oh, I did miss one interesting matter. Sorry, Mrs. Regan. For those of you that are used to coming here and watching on TV, you've probably already noticed that Superintendent Malone is not here with us this evening. He is at a national conference on education sponsored by AASA. It's very important work that he gets to go out there and see the latest and greatest in education, and he's able to bring that back to our district and hopefully, you know, help improve student outcomes and student achievement for us. So, we really didn't want to have him not go, and we're more than in capable hands with Mrs. Regan, so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
And then I should probably apologize for the length of my updates because I'm updating for the both of us, but let me start by saying, the superintendent and myself visited the new K through 12, K through 2 DLC Developmental Learning Center at the Heathbrook School last month. If you remembered, we added this level of special ed programming over to the Heathbrook starting at the beginning of this year, and we really were looking to reflect the programming of special ed that we had at the doing. The principal, Felicia Chenanovich, if I said that correctly, along with Special Ed Director Richard Palatier, hosted a breakfast for the families of all of our DLC students. Teachers and the support staff of this class were also present, but the true stars of the show were our students. If you could have only seen their faces beam when they had guest visitors show up mid-morning that they did not expect, their parents. So it was a wonderful way to truly showcase the level of service provided to these students, and I thank them for doing that. Speaking of showcasing the district's work, in your packet is the annual District Report Card. It's in the consent agenda. Just like a student receives a report card, the district receives an annual report card. Our report card focuses on categories such as student and teacher data, academic opportunities, student attendance and discipline, success after high school, postgraduate plans, student performance on state tests, spending, and accountability. We encourage all of our parents to visit the district website. We have provided a letter and the link to the DESI website to review the Tewksbury District Report Card. I think people will be quite pleased with the data that is within it. I'd like to give you an update on the tiered focus monitoring process, otherwise known as the Coordinated Program Review. It's new this year, and where we are in the process. As you know, DESI does a review of all Massachusetts school districts in the areas of special ed programming and compliance, civil rights, and English language education. The tiered focus monitoring starts with the self-assessment that the district does and provides to DESI. We did that last year. The next step in the process is an interview process and random polling of student folders, both special ed and English language learners. So then DESI comes out and interviews the administration, the staff, and families, and the leaders of our special ed pack this time around. They also combed through, as I said, those random special ed and ELL student folders for compliance and record-keeping. I'm very pleased to tell you that we received wonderful feedback so far. In fact, we were told there were no issues of non-compliance found, in words like exceptional record-keeping, very strongly written IEPs in ELL record-keeping. We are rated Tier 1 in all three categories at this time. This is the highest-rated tier, and we will be on what DESI calls a self-directed plan moving forward. So we look forward to seeing that final report and any feedback that will help us improve as a district in our self-directed planning. In your packet, you'll see that we've provided you with a snapshot of our website analytics. We asked the developer to help us with the website analytics so that we can continuously update and improve it to meet the needs of our community. To that end, we have noticed that our website, our mobile phone website that we had the app developed, had some glitches. We've been working on correcting them. We believe all of those glitches are corrected. We advise any parent out there or community member, if they're still having glitches with our Tewksbury Public School app, to delete the app they have on their phone and upload it again. We believe it is corrected at this time. A flyer for the Unified Basketball Program is also in your folder. The WIN will be hosting that program this year. By definition, Unified Sports joins people with and without intellectual disabilities on the same team. It really was inspired by a simple principle, that training and playing together will really build a path to friendship and understanding. The program runs for seven weeks at the WIN, March 2nd through April 3rd, and anyone interested should contact Mr. Richard Camire at the WIN School. Three pieces of information from the Tewksbury Memorial High School news. Our mock trial team had its first win over Chumsford last week. Their advisor, Mr. Brian Elwood, and the Tewksbury Memorial High School school community is very proud of them. Next, the MIAA, the Massachusetts Insterscholastic Athletic Association, names only one student athlete per month as their Student Athlete of the Month. Our own Tori Schill, 12th grader and esteemed girls, athlete on the girls' hockey team, received that honor for the month of January. Tori will be recognized at the MIAA spring ceremony. Congrats to Tori. And then last week, Mike Lynch honored Jessica Driscoll in his High Five Award on Channel 5 News. Jess is a sophomore of the Red Rangers, our girls' state-winning hockey team. While Mike and Jess's teammates and coach honored Jess, Jess took the opportunity to honor the memory of her late brother Ryan for inspiring her to be a caring person, a good student, and an avid hockey player. This High Five was particularly touching, if you had a chance to see it, and was very well-deserved. Congrats to Jessica and her family for the inspiration they give to all of us. So, I don't know if you know this, but we just hit the 100-day mark last week, the 100 days of school, which means we start planning for summer programming and for the next school year. On that note, last week, we not only attended, but hosted our kindergarten registration and information night right here in LGI-1. Our Director of Student Family Support, Karen Breaker-O'Brien, and our two K through 2 Principals, Ms. Felicia Chenanovich and Terry Gerish, hosted the information night. In attendance were several key members of the school district, our food service department, our own transportation guru, Mr. Libby, several teachers, several kindergarten teachers, special ed support staff, our school nurses, our, both school packs, as well as our C-Packs and our, and Alphabet's. They were able to present and answer questions that were specific to families who are bringing their kindergarteners into us for the first time, or maybe even at the, any time in their family career. So the event was standing room-only, a resounding success, and parents may now go to our district website to schedule specific time slots to register their child at the central office. With our Director of Student and Family Support, all student registrations are done at the center school, and as I said, parents are able to specifically sign up for a one-on-one registration timeframe for their family. Summer programming and planning is well underway for not only summer school, for Alphabet's, and for our enrichment opportunities. We want parents to know that while there be no lack of summer programming, we are being very strategic in which locations that summer program will be taking place. Why? Because we have lots of school renovations. We obviously have the construction happening at the Ryan School. So we'll continue to inform the committee, as well as the community, when we know the specifics of our summer programming. In your, I'm, I'm, I'm getting there, I promise. In your consent agenda, this is where it gets good, right? There's some money in this consent agenda. You'll see two grant awards. First is the Civics Teaching and Learning Grant through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This is a regional endeavor and a group effort with Tewksbury and 11 other districts. You may remember, there's a new mandate in town called the Civics Project for 8th graders and high schoolers. This grant will help us, Tewksbury, work together with the other districts to figure out how to implement that new civics programming. The grant will fund us with professional development, as well as an application we hope to use in the process called iCivics. Tewksbury Public Schools is also the proud recipient of two ExxonMobil grants in the amount of $500 each. These two separate local gas stations, Elks Mobile at 2 Main Street and Life's Too Short Incorporated at 1785 Andover Street, participated in this Alliance Energy Grant Program to support our math and science programming in the district. With your approval of these grants, we'd like to donate the total amount of $1,000 to the Tewksbury Memorial High School robotics team for the various materials they need to create their, not only the create, the competitive robot that you'll see again, but all of the robot prototypes. And then, finally, in my review, maybe finally, we are no longer taking nominations for the Ginsburg Family Award. That application process has closed. As you know, this annual award goes out to a person or a group that contributes time and services towards the needs of our schools and students. In return, the Ginsburg family donates $5,000 in the name of that awardee to a cause of their choice for the schools. So we have received multiple nominations. We want to thank all the families and staff who submitted them. Once the Ginsburg family chooses the winner, we will report back and honor them here at a future school committee meeting. And finally, and Jack already alluded this, to this, this Friday is not only Valentine's Day, but also an early release day for both staff and students. And next week is February vacation. Students and teachers have the week off. Our schools will be closed, and on behalf of the superintendent and myself, we wish our entire school committee, or community, a restful and healthy week.
Great. Does anyone have any questions about that very lengthy report?
Twenty-four two.
Mrs. Regan, just one comment. I know I see some of our C-Pack people in the, in the crowd here. I just wanted to acknowledge and thank them for their collaboration with the Unified Basketball Program at the WIN. This is our second year. We had a very successful year last year. We're hoping to build on that. And also, it's not finalized yet, but we are in the works of doing a very similar program right at the Ryan for the 5th and 6th graders, so we're just trying to iron out the final details, but that looks like it's probably going to run around the same time in March. So I just wanted to acknowledge and thank them for their collaboration in getting that done.
Wonderful event. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. Libby, I think.
Back again. Hi. I'll just, I have one brief update after I took up a lot of your time with the budget hearing. Just wanted to circle back with everyone related to the Ginsburg Award. Last year's winners, Donna's Donuts had requested that their $5,000 be used to support music and arts in the district. So I just think it's important that we circle back and let folks know how that money's being used every year. So we reached out to our, our school principals, who reached back to our music folks in the buildings, and we got some suggestions on how they'd like to spend that money. Drums, saxophones. The WIN School would, in fact, right before I reached out, the WIN had asked about funding a recreational band stipend for an intramural instructor to start sort of a just after-school, for lack of a better word, like a jam session, just a fun band experience. So we're going to use some of the money for that and some awards for our Best to Show, our music, annual music show award winners, to supply them with a family membership to the Museum of Fine Arts. So, so those are some of the ideas we had from our schools and our district administration to use that $5,000.
Great.
Just wanted to let the committee know.
Thank you very much, Mr. Libby. All right. Any questions for Mr. Libby? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the, tonight's consent agenda. Is there anyone that has any question regarding tonight's consent agenda? Seeing none, does, what is the pleasure of the committee at this time?
Make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. It's an unanimous vote. We're going to move on to committee reports, and we are going to start with the elementary school building with Mr. Cutlass.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
We're proceeding along with the design of the elementary school. It's 60% done at this point in time. We're also going through the permitting process with the boards, the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board. That should be complete at the end of this month. With, we have to wait, the appeal periods and construction should begin at that site in, in March. We also went out on an early bid package that, because the bids were coming in so favorable, and it was about $1 million under for that particular piece of work. So everything's proceeding well at this point in time.
Excellent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good news. I'd like to go to Mrs. Demos for the Tewksbury Education Foundation.
There is no updates at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Demos. The Tewksbury C-Pack will be holding its next meeting right here in LGI-1 tomorrow night at 7 o'clock. Everyone is encouraged to come down and participate. And the Wellness Advisory Committee, Mr. Stadman.
Nothing as of yet. We have a next scheduled meeting, March 16th, here in LGI-1.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Stadman. We do have some policy changes, proposals, and adoption, and also some to be rescind this evening. I'd like to give the floor to Mrs. Demos for an update regarding our policies.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
The Policy Committee, Subcommittee met recently. Mr. Stadman, Mrs. Regan, Mr. Malone, and myself, and we were charged with the objective to go through the policies through MASC that needed to be reviewed, rescinded at that time. So the Massachusetts Association of School Committees has reviewed the following, their policy manual, and has determined that the following policies are redundant and/or no longer necessary. The Tewksbury Policy Committee met to review these policies and recommends to rescind the policy, these policies, presenting them on the, this will be the informational reading only tonight, so there will be no vote required. The first policy is IHA, Basic Instructional Program, JLA, Student Insurance Program, JLD, Guidance Program, JP, Student Gifts and Solicitations, IHBG-E, Homeschooling. Again, these are what the MASC has told us that they are either redundant and/or no longer necessary. The following policies are our revision policies at the current moment. Massachusetts Association of School Committees has reviewed and revised the following policies as a result of legal changes, changes in practice, or simply updating the language to reflect more modern needs. Tewksbury Policy Committee met to review these following policies and recommends that we revise the policies, presenting them tonight to you for an informational reading only. Number one, JB, Equal Educational Opportunities, JBB, Educational Equity, JFABF, Educational Opportunities for Children in Foster Care, JFABE, Educational Opportunities for Military Children, and finally, JFBD, Homeless Students Enrollment Rights and Services. A vote is not required on this informational reading either, but the public is encouraged to review these policies. They are available online, and any input, comments, questions, concerns can be directed right directly to the superintendent's office, and we will take those into account at our next policy meeting.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Demos. They're all business. I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Regan, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, what you have in front of you is the next rendition of our School Year 2021 draft calendar. Tonight, I am hoping that you can vote on the calendar as is. You will notice that we are starting quite late in August and ending later than normal in June, with our snow days included. Let me remind you, we talked about this a little bit at the last meeting, in some of our collective bargaining agreements, this dictates when we can start our school year. For example, the TTA contract states no earlier, we can start no earlier than the first Monday before Labor Day. We explored the option of starting a few days earlier with some of our groups in order to get our students out of school a little earlier in June. The TTA by majority vote, voted no to the earlier start. So before you is the calendar again. Technically, tonight, you are voting on the first and last day of school, the full PD days and the school holiday breaks. And on the reverse side, you can see that we did set the open house nights and the conference nights. And due to the late start and the late end of the school year, we still have to consider the best placement of our half-day workshops and our graduation day for TMHS. We will bring those dates to you once they have been identified. Again, for now, we would like to publish these dates on the website. We are getting calls, what's the first day of school next year already. So I just want to remind you, this does require a roll-call vote.
What is the pleasure of the committee at this time?
I would like to make a motion to accept the calendar.
First and last.
First and last. Right. First and last day of school, well, school vacations and holidays as well, right?
Yes.
Okay.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the first and last day of school and the school vacations. All the, I'm sorry, this requires a roll-call vote. Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, we already took number one out of order. That brings us to the superintendent's evaluation timeline. I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Regan, please.
Well, I think what you have is the timeline to... Well, I think what you have is the timeline to continue, I think, on or about May 1st is the most important date to look at, is to distribute the superintendent evaluation documents to the school committee members. The school committee contributes to the evaluation of the superintendent using the rubric and documents provided to us from DESI. Individual school committee members will consult with the school committee member and through the chair, help to provide that document, that final write-up, which will be delivered publicly on or about June 10th. So the process moves pretty quickly once May hits. All members of the committee are obviously welcome to contribute to that evaluation.
Great. Mrs. Regan, and just so everyone, the public is aware, this is our yearly formal evaluation and assessment of our superintendent, and our opportunity to really dig in and, and hold him accountable for progress that, you know, we hope that he's making in the district. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you. And last but not least, on the new business.
Last but not least is guidance on the short-form process of the Student Opportunity Act, otherwise known as the SOA, which is what I'll be referring to it as. This is an initiative and a promise from the Commonwealth to provide more resources, especially to districts that are looking to close the achievement gaps of students of color, low-income students, English language learners, and students with disabilities. The SOA intentionally focuses on additional Chapter 70 funds to the most needy districts, those with the highest frequency and with the increasing enrollment of students that contribute to those subgroups that I just listed, typically the urban districts, which Tewksbury is not. Districts will receive funding based on those needs. These new incremental Chapter 70 funds are intended to enhance core instruction, target student supports, particularly those students, subgroups I listed, develop our teacher talent to do so, and provide conditions for student success. So regardless of the amount we may receive, a requirement of the SOA is to reach out to our stakeholders and get feedback as to what the potential of use for these new dollars may be, even though we don't know what those new dollars are right now. We have actually already started that process with our townwide PAC leaders, our TTA leaders, and our admin team, and our CPAC leaders. We'll be posting a link, a very short survey, for our entire school committee, community, sorry about that, to engage in that feedback that we need to provide the DESI with the plan. DESI has advised district leaders, especially those in the short-form category, which is what Tewksbury is, those of us receiving lesser amounts, not to reinvent the wheel, but to enhance what we're already doing to the end that I listed a minute ago. Again, as a requirement, that feedback will lead to a district plan that you, as a school committee, will need to vote on at our next March 18th school committee meeting. It's a very fast process, so that we can submit our plan to DESI by April 1st. At this time, we do not know what our SOA resources will be, or what we will receive. What we do know, that any incremental increase is based on our Chapter 70 funding. So right now, we're poised to see our Chapter 70 funding reduced by approximately 1% in the next school year. So again, this is only Chapter 70 funding, which is a percentage of our total funding. We're poised to see that reduced slightly, and then potentially a .75% increase on that reduction of Chapter 70 due to the SOA. So while we don't expect to get less overall, and I know the math sounds funny, but we have to look at overall budget increases the next year, so we don't expect to get less overall, we don't expect to see much more. We're certainly happy to take any additional funding because it is to be used to close the achievement gap of those students. So keep in mind, that is just a projection. We do not know those numbers at this time, and this only pertains to Chapter 70 funding. So again, this is informational only, the fast-moving process directed by the Department of Education. No action needs to be taken tonight, and at the next March 18th meeting, we'll provide you with the district plan to vote on, and hopefully a solid number on what those funds are.
Thank you very much. Going to school committee matters of interest, I would like to start with you, Mr. Wilson.
I'll just quickly say that we've had a number of senior events, the girls hockey, girls basketball, and then tomorrow night, don't miss an opportunity to wish the senior boys basketball team the best of luck. I'll tell you, the way they put together those events, you know, I was at the girls hockey the other night, I just think, what a tremendous way to honor those girls and, and thank them for bringing a lot of positive attention to our community. Fantastic. They beat Chelmsford three to one, so my alma mater, actually, but I was still very excited for the win and the girls also last night, so that's it.
Great. Mr. Stadman?
Mr. Stadman said, and just re-mentioned, I can, school's out next week. Enjoy the vacation break. Well-needed for, for the teachers and admins both, so you guys enjoy, enjoy the break. So that's all I have.
Mr. Cutlass?
I'm all set, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Mrs. Demos?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Great. And the chair has nothing this evening as well. The future school committee and future subcommittee meeting dates are as follows. March 18th, 2020, we'll have another public hearing at 6:30 PM for the budget. Our regular meeting that evening will start at 7:00 PM. On April 15th, 2020, we will have our reorganization meeting at 7:00 PM, and our regularly scheduled meeting at 7:15. Is there anybody that wishes to put any future agenda items forth tonight at this meeting? As always, if you do have anything, including the public, please feel free to contact one of us, or if it's a finance, Mr. Libby, or certainly the superintendent, and we'd be more than happy to put that on the agenda for you. Seeing that, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion in a second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn tonight's meeting. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you, and have a good evening.